All right, it is 3:00 PM. We have a quorum. We're going to call this workshop session of the Lewisville City Council to order. First thing on the agenda is discussion of regular agenda items and consent agenda items. Council, if you would, go ahead and open your packets. Got Councilmember Troyer with the invocation and Mayor Pro Tem Meredith with the pledges. We have a presentation. We're swearing at police chief, I mean swearing in.
Can we tie the flag?
No, I think we need to get it done.
I mean, how will we really know this guy?
We have our visitor's citizens forum, followed by consent agenda. Item one, minutes. Item two, approval of the public art master plan update. Item three, professional service agreement, number five, with Hap and Associates. Item four, agreement with OcuMed for occupational health services. Item five, regular hearing, consideration of alternative standards associated with screening requirements for commercial amusement facility.
I hope this makes you happy.
Item six, consideration and ordinance of the city council of the city of Lewisville for the general municipal election, as well as calling a bond election. Item seven, consideration and ordinance, limitations on turning around and prohibiting U-turns at multiple intersections.
I do have a question about that.
Yes, sir.
The Huff Inns Boulevard, does that, is that for the intersection itself or is that, is that for the two turn lanes?
It's for the two, one on either side.
East and west.
Correct.
How does that affect the businesses, business access for the, there are several businesses that are few, fifty blocks, like westbound, have to go all the way, almost all the way to business.
I don't think both of these are eastbound only. So it doesn't really affect access to those businesses that are on the south side.
There is a westbound.
Yeah, but we're not, we're not prohibiting westbound U-turns, just eastbound turns.
Okay, okay.
Then we have reports. We do have closed session items.
Yes, sir.
And that is it. Any questions or comments before we go ahead and move into item B? All right, item B, artist recommendation for Tiddle McFadden Public Safety Building, public art. We have Denise Helping, our Art Center manager, presenting.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor, council, Claire, please. Today, we are giving you an update on the artists that the committee and the Arts Advisory Board has reviewed and recommended, bringing to you to go to contract eventually for the public safety building. This is your opportunity to let us know that you support this recommendation, or if you have any questions or concerns, we can definitely talk about that and take it back to the committees and the board and the artist. A little background on this project. The RFQ called for a work of art. We're looking for a monumental-sized work of art that would be appropriate to place in front of a public safety building. We wanted something contemporary in style. It didn't have to be related to Lewisville or Texas history, or we didn't want something traditional, bronze firefighter or policeman. We wanted something a little bit more unique for this place. And we talked a lot about within the RFQ and with the artists and with the committee about it being a beacon to the building, about being a welcoming element to the porch of that building, right there at the corner of Valley and Main. And also, could it be used hopefully to break down typical barriers that people feel when approaching public safety staff and services and maybe consequences is why you're there. And we didn't specify a material, metal, glass, stone. We didn't know. We just wanted it to be durable, to last a long time in our Texas extreme weather. The budget available is $350,000. $200,000 of that was found in the project budget when expenses started to get under control. And then the Public Arts CIP is contributing $150,000. The artist's call was published for $320,000, and we withheld $30,000 for administrative costs, and then if we need to contribute to some site-specific modifications to the building plans.
If I pause right there, go back. So, and just to clarify, and you may remember this council as a beacon and the porch, those were two of the terms that were used by the architects to, for the visioning of the architecture of the building. And so when we talk about it being a beacon, we're also, you know, porch, reminiscent of porch, that concept, that was really tying into those architectural inspirations.
Are we going to have some rocking chairs back there?
Yes.
Yeah. Evaluation committee consisted of 11 people, three people, a subcommittee of the Arts Advisory Board, two of the architects, Stephen Hilt and Chris Sano. Bella Peake represented, she didn't weigh in on the scoring of the artist, but she came in during the interviews as project manager, props. And then there were several city staff on the committee. We published this call on cafe.org, Call for Entry, and it's our common website that we use for big projects, probably over 30,000 or so, we would post on this website. And we received a record number of applications, 218. It was huge. Some of them were not reviewed by the committee, but we had a lot of artists apply, very interested in this call. We got it down to three finalists. Blessing Hancock, based in Phoenix, Arizona. Gordon Huether was based in Napa, California. And Cliff Garden is based in LA. We had them propose, do an actual proposal of what the artwork would be coming out of their studio. We did interviews with them, with the committee, and the committee came up with a recommendation. We took it to the Arts Advisory Board at their January meeting, and they supported the committee's decision. The artist we are recommending is Blessing Hancock, again, out of Phoenix, Arizona. She is a landscape architect, and also she has her BFA original schooling was in sculpture, and then she became a landscape architect. She's done hundreds of site-specific sculptures all over the world. And she works in metals and LED lighting, and shows these very unique things, and a lot with words. So these are a few examples of some of her other work. And then we'll share a few images of her proposal for our project. So it is a domed-shaped sculpture that you can walk through, and in fact, we will probably end the edges. Instead of being a blunt edge, we've asked her if they can be kind of turned into a bench. So when you enter in under this piece, you could sit down inside of it. It will be a natural steel metal color during the day, and it will be, have tons of LED lights inside of it that will change colors at night. These shapes and swirls are all words that will be engaged, that will be collected from the community, the community through a public engagement activity run by her studio. And as you can see in the bottom-left picture, those words will project out onto the ground around the work at night. So it looks one way in the day, a totally different way at night. And again, the community will contribute these words and phrases and ideas to her work. The work itself will end up being about 20 feet long, about 10 feet wide, and approximately 14 feet high. Again, all this is in the proposal stages, subject to change a little bit as we get into final fabrication and certain details, but about that big. So it's pretty big. And again, it's going to be color-changing and be out there on that plaza, kind of where that bank building is right now. That is all we have. And there's a picture of Blessing herself, sitting in her work. She has a couple of those on her website. Any questions?
I just want to make sure that the words are Louisville-specific and not some global "humbaya, let's all feel good," you know, that's marketed everywhere right now.
Yeah, we, we don't know the exact method of collecting the phrases, but it would be maybe through an online poll, open up just for Lewisville residents, or probably some kind of in-person gathering with her and her studio assistants, when they would come to town to do that, maybe a combination of both. And so there would be a review, and we would, yeah, we would approve them.
And we have approval?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
I think this is a wonderful, you know, wonderful piece. I think it's, what you call transformative, you know, in front of the building. I think what you said, this is much, to me, much better than just putting a statue out there. This is something that people can come. I mean, I grew up with this. I mean, I grew up in art school and architecture, so I had teachers that did these competitions. So I think this is a really, really good thing.
I love the seating idea.
Yeah.
Did you say something about the timing of it?
Yes. The plan and the obligation as put out in the RFQ was that it would be done in connection with the building finishing up. So Q1 of '25, it would come in, hopefully right on schedule with the building wrapping up and whatever month those end up being, we would time it like that. And the artist has committed that, given her studio's cue to do that.
So then we're probably going to, whatever public outreach needs to be done is probably going to happen pretty quickly.
The summer.
Probably.
The summer, okay. It would need to.
I would also just make sure with the LED lighting, that can handle the Texas, Texas heat.
Yes.
And Main is concerned with if that thing goes out, but the.
Yes.
So, and these are in Phoenix.
She's from Phoenix.
Yeah, so the heat, she's got, the freezing, maybe not.
She's done things from the north, it's everywhere, so her stuff is tolerable to a lot of different climates. Everything is modular, all the little curves and surfaces and stuff, so we can take one off and replace lights. And, and these kind of things will need some maintenance. That's just a fact of it. You don't buy something like this, make something like this, and I'm expected to never need any, any sort of maintenance. So the lights will need to be replaced, maybe in a decade or, you know, could even be a little sooner than that. But that, we would plan for that, and work with budgeting and take care of it, you know, ahead of it going out.
Another interesting tidbit to this, and I don't think I've heard you say this, but, so when we did our public art master plan, we reached out to the community and said, what of these, we gave examples to the public and said, what of these artists most resonate with you? And we didn't know Blessing Hancock was actually going to apply, but Blessing Hancock's art was actually one of those, and it was the top rated in our community of one thing. So it just happened to end up like that.
Very nice.
Yeah.
Awesome.
It's a blessing. It's a blessing.
Denise, thank you, and the Arts Board for all the work. I know this is not easy to chew through, 218, and then see three just amazing artists come to the table and try to figure out what would be best for the community. So really, please extend our gratitude to that committee for all the work that they've done on this. I think it's a great opportunity and additional community engagement, which is, which is Anything else before we break? All right, there's nothing more to be done here in the workshop session, so we will break until our regular meeting at 7:00. All right, it is 7:00 PM, and we're going to call this meeting of the Lewisville City Council to order. First on our tonight's agenda is our invocation with Councilmember Troyer.
Please stand and join me in a short moment of contemplation and retrospection.
Mayor Pro Tem Meredith, would you lead us in the pledges?
Please join me in the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
All right, first up on the agenda, and if I could have Judge and Chief, we're going to have our swearing-in ceremony for our new police chief, Mr. Brooke Rollins.
All right, Chief, if you'll repeat after me, "I" and state your name.
"I," Brooke Rollins.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office of police chief.
The duties of the office of police chief.
Of the city of Lewisville, state of Texas.
Of the city of Lewisville, state of Texas.
And will.
And will.
The best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And the charter and ordinances of this city.
And the charter and ordinance of this city.
And I furthermore solemnly swear.
And I furthermore solemnly swear.
That I have not directly or indirectly.
That I have not directly or indirectly.
Paid, offered, or promised to pay.
Paid, offered, or promised to pay.
Contributed nor promised to contribute.
Contributed nor promised to contribute.
Any money or valuable thing.
Any money or valuable thing.
Or promised any public office or employment.
Or promised any public office or employment.
As a reward.
As a reward.
To secure my appointment.
To secure my appointment.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Well, it's my pleasure and privilege to introduce Chief Rollins tonight. I'm going to give him the opportunity to say a couple of words, and then we will break for some photos out in the lobby, and then we'll come back to the rest of our meeting. But what I want to make perfectly clear is, when things get really crazy in a city, it's not usually the city manager or the mayor that take the first hit. It's the police chief. They are the face of our city. And I am incredibly excited tonight to be here with a chief like Chief Rollins. The process that he went through, the interaction with the community, the feedback that I got was tremendous. And he really stepped up to the plate. So now that you've set the bar so incredibly high, we expect amazing things, Chief Rollins.
Thank you. There are only two costume changes for this speech, so we should be fine as far as time is concerned. I appreciate all of you being here. I mean that. I'm thankful to Mayor and Council and to Claire and her team for the trust they put into me and the city. I'm grateful for the opportunities that Arlington gave me. I have a lot of representatives from Arlington here tonight. Yeah, I think so. They've, they've had a chance to bring me to a place that I'm at today, and I am especially excited to be a member of the Lewisville Police Department, to work alongside the men and women of this department. I know that it's been a long time that Lewisville has been preparing for a new chief since the announcement of the retirement of the former. And it's been a long time for me to be able to come to this position myself. And I know that I've received a, I've received the keys to this kingdom, and this is a wonderful place. It's hard to take the work of the prior chief and say things like, we're going to make this place better, but, because I think he left this place in very good shape, and I'm very indebted to him for what he did, and I thank him for the opportunity that he's left for me. So I look forward to working every day to make this department even better than where we currently are. And I promise that that's what you'll receive from me. And I'm thankful to my family for being here tonight. Thank you all. Look forward to working with you. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate your time. And we can all go home, I think, right?
All right, item D, visitor's citizens forum. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. I have three requests to appear before the city council this evening. The first, Daniel Law, doesn't wish to speak, but he's got item D. Okay, that's a little bit ahead of time. Sorry about that.
Oh, this is, yeah, he just does not want to.
Oh, you do. I'm sorry about that. My apologies, Mr. Law. I saw X's and arrows, wasn't sure what was going on here. So, Mr. Law, if you wouldn't mind, five minutes, speaking on traffic. And sir, if you would please state your name and address for the record.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, my name is Daniel Law. I live on 313 Wythe Hart, which is basically the Casa Hill northeast or far north is right behind 121 Target. So today I want to talk about traffic on Windhaven and Josie. Oh, by the way, I have an opportunity to email the chief. I really like him. Good job in selecting him. Anyway, so I live on Wythe Hart, so I usually drive on Windhaven going to work, right? So let's talk about Windhaven. So if you think about coming from Plano, right, going on Windhaven, if you guys familiar with the area, right, right before Wythe Hart, there's a big curve, right? I think, right, I wonder if CD can do something to reduce the speed, because, you know, right, right after the big curve to the right, you have Wythe Hart. And it's really difficult for us to coming out of Wythe Hart or coming in, right, either making left or making right, because you have cars speeding so fast, our reaction time is so slow, right? Even though they're coming in 50, 60, even though the speed limit is 40, I think it's really, really challenging for the citizen, all the resident coming in and out from that area. And then the other thing is, in the neighborhood, if you think about, we have Wythe Hart and the Highwood Trail, right, most of the neighborhood in Casa Hill or around here have a speed limit of 25 posted in the neighborhood, but our neighborhood doesn't have that. I was wondering if the city can look into, you know, posting a speed limit sign, either 20 or 25. Because most of the time, when I walk around the neighborhood, I will see people speeding down the roadway, and then I know they exit 30 miles, because we have the speed reader, and I can see them doing 17, 25, 28, and then that, you know, slow down sign keep yowling. And then, you know, we have a lot of EVs, you know, Tesla in specific. I know, I know, they're trying to achieve like the highest speed, fastest speeds in the neighborhood, but you can see them zooming down the roadway. Okay? And then going down Windhaven, right, right before you go into Josie, you have the far-right-hand turn. I don't know what happened to that turn. If you're familiar with the area, that, that far-right-hand turn has like a deep or like a pothole. It's been there forever. I know the city tried to fix it, but I think, I don't know what happened on the last week, and then the pothole or deep's still there. I think it's really dangerous for motorists, especially for me. I ride motorcycle. I think the deep is, is so dangerous that if you ride motorcycle or bicycle, you can flip over easily. And then let's talk about, you know, moving off to Josie, right, between Windhaven and 121. That area got really, really bad during rush hour, so I don't know if CD can look into traffic management, right, how we open up. And then the other thing is, right, if you think about Josie, you have Target right here, you have Kroger right there, right? During rush hour, people try to make a left-hand into the plaza, either going to Kroger or going to Target, right? You have three lanes, three lanes so busy, and then people trying to come in, and then, you know, right of way, who has it, who doesn't have it, doesn't matter, but I see a lot of accidents, because somebody trying to turn in, and then people, you know, coming in, because you have two lanes that's super busy, one lane's not busy, and then, you know, crash over there. So I wonder if, you know, the city can impose like no left-hand turn during rush hour. And I think the last thing I want to talk about is, if you think about Parker Road, and then you think about Oldenton, and you think about Josie, right, the speed limit's either 50 or 55. You have like middle school, you have like elementary school on Josie. Can city look into like, you know, reduce the speed, right? I know 55 is the maximum speed, but people do it at, you know, take it as a minimum speed. I see people going down 70. Like today, I was going on Parker right before the elementary school or middle school, right? I see the blinker, right, for school zone, that's around nine o'clock. People think that's no school, but I was like doing 35. I see people like doing 50, and then they mad at me for following the traffic sign. So, Mayor, that's all I have, but I really like the new chief, and that's all I have today.
Well, appreciate the comprehensive list, and I'm sure we'll have somebody from our Streets Department talk to you about those specific issues.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, sir. All right, we have Darrell, and my apologies, Schultes?
It's closed.
I am sure you will help me fix that. Mr. Schultes, if you could please state your name and address for the record, and do we have anybody with staff maybe that can help with the mic? Or you got it?
Yeah, we got it.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, my name is Darrell Schultes. I live at 415 South Garden Ridge Boulevard. The Evergreen Apartments there, I've been there 11 years. Mr. Mayor and City Council, I'm here to talk about two things that's really been on my heart and my mind. The power chair I sit in is by way to get around, it's about $3,900 to buy one new, and thank God I've been helped with Medicare to get one. So, but my, my biggest concern is the sidewalks. Now, if I lived on the east side of 35, praise God, they're the best sidewalks in the world. I've never seen better-looking sidewalks. But if you go west on 30, off of 35, it's a nightmare. There are some bad cracks and places I can't even get across. I have to cross the street to go the other side, because I can't get up over the, the sidewalk's so deep and so high. And I, there's too many to even name. Real bad ones right there past where the new Hawaiian Falls restaurant is. It's, it's got to be six or seven inches. I can't even get up over that. So I have to go back to the light, cross over, and come down past on the other side there by the Shell Station, and cross at that red light, and then come on down across the bridge. And there's a lot more, I could go on and on, but I don't want to take up a lot of time. So the cracks are really bad everywhere. And my second idea, my thoughts have been landscapers. They do a nice job, and the men work hard, but I'm a little bit tired of coming down the street and seeing them mowing across the street, beside the street, and they're blowing all the cuttings out on the street. And I don't think that's right to our city. The city's a beautiful city and a good city. I think they should be made to pick that up, my opinion. Not out in the street and sweeping it, because they'll get run over, but at least turn the mowers and blow it in, and then rake it up. So that's basically what I just had in my mind, that the cracks are my biggest concern. My wife did fall. Living on Garden Ridge, we walked up to McDonald's once while I get a burger, and she wasn't paying attention. She was busy talking, which women are good for. And there's one there, it's at least four inches high, and her toe caught it, and down she went. So she just had both shoulders operate on and fixed. Luckily, she was okay. So that's my biggest concern is the, like I said, this way is beautiful. Each curb is just fixed up so perfectly. And so that's my biggest concern is the sidewalks on my side of town. So thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. We'll have someone reach out to you and look at those specific areas where we may be able to assist.
All right, thank you.
Our third presenter for this evening, Ms. Nancy Sansom. Happy New Year, Nancy.
Thank you very much. Happy New Year to you. My name is Nancy Sansom. I have lived at Evergreen at Lewisville for over five years. I'm also the coordinator and spokesperson for the Seniors United, to help seniors or the Lewisville Senior Living Challenges Organization. We've been in practice for the last two or three years. We appreciate the opportunity to have, to speak to you in regards to how seniors are surviving at this great time of change. We realize how hard the efforts and time you put in to helping listen to us every, twice a month. And we think Lewisville is a very special place, and many of our residents feel that they don't want to leave Lewisville, and they want to stay here. We'd like to focus on all the assistance Lewisville seniors have received and have been given, and it has been appreciated in meeting their rent costs. Though times are getting worse, according to the evacuation lab, evictions have increased by more than 50% this last year, 2022. The Denton Home The Denton Homeless Shelter has reported that up to 50% of the homeless are now over 65 years of age. We continue to support you in your efforts to develop more below-market price rental properties for our increasingly aging population. We love Lewisville and want it to be a part of this thriving and supportive community, which I think is one of the best in Texas, but I'm a little biased. We are fortunate to have Denton County top official leaders scheduled to speak to our general membership meeting at Evergreen once a month. Senator Tan Parker was our guest speaker in January. On February 22nd, Thursday evening, at 6:30, the CEO and President, whom I just dearly love, Gary Henderson, will be presenting. Then on March 25th, the President, the, let me put it this way, the government, the Governor appointed Ron Lucy, the Governor's Director for People with Disabilities, and he will be coming to speak to us from wherever. And we're gonna, we have many more officials to present to us each month. We invite each one of you, and you've probably gotten my emails on this, the dates, and I will continue to keep you in the loop, to let you know the speakers. We try to get top, top-level speakers to inform our residents. In closing, we'd like to mention again the importance of establishing a new Lewisville Senior Advisory Board, and it's been backed by several city or county officials. As we hurtle toward 2025, we have reached this point for the need of such a board to oversee the many senior needs throughout the community, such as identifying best practices, architectural barriers, safety issues, and provided a conduit for dispersing information to those in need of important information and assistance in coordinating with the city council. Again, thank you very much for your patience in hearing our concerns and our suggestions, and we are so appreciative that your interest in helping seniors survive in this turbulent times. And you received a packet tonight. We always hand that out because we're afraid you'll delete our emails. Anyway, you heard from our co-resident, Darrell Springs, and we're also concerned about sidewalks, so I'm sure one of your staff will deal with that, and then I guess Clara Powell, we could deal with that at another meeting. But we're just grateful that we live in this great city, and you all work so hard, and we really appreciate all your efforts more than you know. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Those are all the presenters we have for the evening? All right. Thank you, sir. Item E, consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card or e-comment must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. Do we have any requests for removal?
No.
All right. Counsel, entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you'd please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item F, regular hearing. Five, consideration of an alternative standard associated with screening requirements for a commercial amusement facility outdoor on approximately 3.175 acres out of the S.M. Hayden Survey Abstract Number 537, Zoned Light Industrial District, located on the east side of Barfneck Lane, approximately 1,540 feet south of Midway Road, as requested by Ronald Weigel, Endurance Development, on behalf of Pathfinder Sports LLC, the property owner. Item 23-07-9-ALT STD. The city council approved a special use permit for a cricket sports facility on September 18th, 2023. The applicant planned to meet the Unified Development Code screening requirements for portions of the development that are adjacent to an existing single-family home. To meet the request of the adjacent property owner, the applicant proposes an alternative standard to replace the required six-foot masonry screening wall with an eight-foot board-on-board capped fence with steel fence posts facing the indoor cricket facility to reduce the required landscape buffer adjacent to the entry drive by 50% and to eliminate the required street trees along the northern portion of the property. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval, six to nothing, on January 16th, 2024, and has recommended that the city council approve the alternative standard as set forth in the caption above. We do have Mr. Richard Lutke available for questions. I don't have any comment for this one, so counsel, entertain a motion.
Move to oppose the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. No other comments or questions. We'll go ahead and vote.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. This is not a public hearing.
Yeah.
I apologize. So I need to amend that motion then.
Okay.
Because we've not been in a public hearing. So I apologize for that. Really quickly, before I make the motion, I would like to thank the applicant for being so flexible and working with the adjacent property owner to come up with a solution that I believe everybody's happy with. So with that, I will move to approve the alternative standard as set forth in the caption.
Second.
And our second. All right. Counsel, if you'd please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item six, consideration of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Lewisville, Texas, calling a general municipal election to be held on Saturday, May 4th, 2024, a uniform election date within the city to elect at large a mayor and a city council member placed two to a full three-year term. And an ordinance of the city council of the city of Lewisville, Texas, calling a bond election to be held on Saturday, May the 4th, 2024, a unified election date within the city for the purpose of city firefighting facilities, expansion of the animal shelter adoption center, park, open space and recreation improvements and facilities, and street and roadway improvements, providing for early voting and for notice of election, providing for other matters relating to the elections, providing for repealer, severability, and an effective date, and declaring an emergency. This agenda item accomplishes two goals. One, it recommends adoption of an ordinance calling for the general municipal election to elect mayor and council member for place two. And two, it recommends adoption of an ordinance calling a bond election for voters to vote for or against the issuance of general obligation bonds for city firefighting facilities, expansion of the animal shelter adoption center, park, open space and recreation improvements facilities, and street and roadway, and, street and roadway improvements. It's recommended that the city council approve the ordinances set forth in the caption above. We do have Thomas Harris, our city secretary, available for questions, as well as David Herb, our Director of Finance.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City Attorney?
And that was two ordinances, right? I couldn't hear. You moved to approve both ordinances?
Moved to approve both ordinances?
Yes, moved to approve both ordinances.
This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Lewisville, Texas, calling a general municipal election to be held on Saturday, May 4th, 2024, a uniform election date within the city to elect at large a mayor and city council member placed number two to a full three-year term, providing for early voting and for notice of election, providing for other matters relating to the elections, providing for repealer, severability, and an effective date, and declaring an emergency. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Lewisville, Texas, calling a bond election to be held on Saturday, May 4th, 2024, a uniform election date within the city, making provisions for the conduct of the election and other provisions relating thereto and declaring an emergency.
Counsel, if you'd please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item seven, consideration of an ordinance amending the Lewisville City Code, Section 15-87(c), limitations on turning around prohibiting U-turns at the following intersections: both median openings on State Highway 121 Business, either side of Huffines Boulevard, FM 544, across from Killian Middle School, West Vista Ridge Mall Drive at Highview Lane, and Valley Ridge Parkway at Valley Ridge Circle, providing for a repealer, severability, penalty, and an effective date, and declaring an emergency. To improve the safety of the residents and drivers in the city of Lewisville, city staff is recommending prohibiting U-turns at several locations throughout the city. These locations include two median openings on State Highway 121 Business, approximately 1,400 feet east of the Huffines Boulevard intersection, and 900 feet west of the Huffines Boulevard intersection. The median opening on FM 544, approximately 480 feet east of the Killian Middle School entrance, the intersection of West Vista Ridge Mall Drive at Highview Lane, and the intersection of Valley Ridge Boulevard at Valley Ridge Circle. It's recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above, and we do have Mr. David Salmon, our city engineer, available for questions.
I have a quick question, David. So when we put, are we ready to put the signs out now?
Yes, we're gonna go ahead and put them out right away.
Okay. And do, so we, do we put something in addition to the sign itself that draws attention to, this is a new sign, just so people are aware?
Yeah, we can do the rad, the orange flags, the temporary flags that go on top of the signs.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Other questions? There are no other questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the ordinances set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the Lewisville City Code, Section 15-87(c), limitations on turning around prohibiting U-turns at the following intersections: both median openings on State Highway 121 Business, either side of Huffines Boulevard, FM 544, sorry, across from Killian Middle School, West Vista Ridge Mall Drive at Highview Lane, and Valley Ridge Parkway at Valley Ridge Circle, providing for a repealer, severability, penalty, and an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
Counsel, please vote. Motion passes six to nothing. Thank you, counsel. Item G, reports. Reports about items of community interest regarding which no action will be taken. Counsel, Mr. Kelly, would you mind if we started down on your end of the house?
I have no report, Mayor.
No report.
Yes, I want to first welcome, welcome our new chief, Rollins, to Lewisville. He's probably still outside taking pictures. It's a pleasure to have him aboard, but I also want to take the time to kind of talk about the Youth Action Council meeting, that summit that we had this past weekend. And, you know, we always thank our staff, our park staff, our police staff, for the work they do, but I want to highlight our community relations team and our, and Ted's HR team for the work that they did, because they work with the Youth Action Council month after month, and they spend extra hours outside of work doing that. So I want, I know the kids are grateful, but I just want to let you know that we're grateful, and we, we see the great work that you did. And we've come a long ways since, from 2017, where we, where we started off, where Melinda Goller was our HR director at the time, and she took it, she took it and then began, and because of our working with Cedar Hill, they allowed us to kind of take a template and grow it from there. And to see all the kids, I think it was 300-plus kids that we had this weekend, one of our first members, Cameron Dockery, who graduated from Lewisville High School, and pray for you and him, now working at Lewisville ISD, is kind of exemplifies what the program is. It's to teach these kids what government is, demystify it, and let them become the leaders they are, whether they take their talents outside of Lewisville, or like Cameron, or come back, comes back to Lewisville and one day will be a leader in our city. So I just want to just give, give kudos for that. Also, I would be remiss if I did not tease our mayor for the fantastic job that he and his wife did for the United Way Dancing With The Stars. Yeah, see, I, the staff forgot theirs, but, but they did, they get us proud. And I just want to say fantastic job, and we'll see you guys next year. You gonna repeat?
Yeah, no, no, that's, there'll be somebody else for that. I am now alumni.
That's all I have, Mayor.
No report, Mayor.
Counsel member?
Yeah, I want to echo the same sentiments that Councilmember Jones did with the Youth Action Council thing Saturday. Very well organized. Boys and Girls Club was there, even have an area for the staff to kind of get away from the kids a little bit. So everything was very well put on. Even I was there, I was there for about an hour and a half, but great job on that. Library activities for the week, AARP Tax Aid, Mondays, February 5th through April 15th, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Crawford Meeting Room. Appointment is required. Valentine Card Factory for families with children of all ages, Tuesday, February 6th, 5:30 to 7:00, at the Bennett Program Room. No registration required. Resumes with Renee for adults, Thursday, February 8th, 6:00 to 7:00. No registration required at the small conference room. And Barbie Movie Party for teens, ages 13 to 18. Friday, February 9th, 6:30 to 9:00. Registration is required at the Bennett Program Room. And that's all I've got.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. I have a number of activities and performances going on at the Lewisville Grand Theater. First of all, performances, we have Texas tunes coming up, The Suffers, presented by the city of Lewisville on February 10th. Pulsonella, a Neapolitan Love Story, presented by the Lewisville Lake Symphony on February 16th. Black Box Songwriter Series, Sarah Hickman, presented by the city of Lewisville on February 18th. And as always, every Friday night, the acoustic jam sessions presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville. Then we have several activities going on. Val Art Talk, Darla Bostic, presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville on February 13th. And the Lewisville Grand Songwriting Workshop, presented by the city of Lewisville on February This is along with the Black Box Songwriter Series. And then finally, exhibitions going on. The Lewisville High School's exhibition, presented by the Lewisville Independent School District, going on now through February 24th. And Becoming One, The Time Is Always Right to Do What Is Right exhibition, presented by the MLK of North Texas Committee, now through March 2nd. And that is a tremendous exhibit. If you have not seen it, you need to look at those, look at the, go take a look at those art, art, things that the kids have done. It's just, it's unbelievable to me. I'm, I'm, I'm a stick, stick figures person, so I'm just always amazed at the art that comes out of our students in the ISD. And that's it.
Thank you, sir. City Secretary, anything?
No report, Mayor.
No report, Mayor.
I have a couple of reports, three things to report on. The park team was out in Allen, Texas, on the 26th of January to attend the DFW Directors' Association annual awards banquet. And the Parks and Recreation Department got three awards. Our first one was for Scott Keister. He's one of our hard-working volunteers out at, for our friends Alila. He was awarded the Supreme Service Award. So we're very proud of all the work they do and he's done for us. And then our Pollinator Prairie Program, so recognized for the Environmental Excellence Award. So all the pollinator prairies we're putting out there, doing all the new medians, it got, it got a, got an award for that, thanks to Chris Chastain, his Preserve and Green Belt team, and then Dr. Jamie Baxter Sly and the students at UNT for all the help they did this summer in developing all that. And then I have one more, and if Stacy was doing this report, she would not tell you about this one, but she was recognized as the distinguished professional of the year for the, for DFW. And it's just all the hard work she's done over the years, and not only for the city of Lewisville, but the impact she's made throughout the state of Texas. So next time you see her, congratulate her on her award.
Thank you.
I don't have any awards to report this evening, unfortunately. However, I do have the lake level. It's 97.9% full, 521.56 feet.
Awesome. Thank you.
We just want to say we're grateful to have Chief Rollins join us, too. We've given him a lot the last couple of days. He keeps coming back, so we're grateful for that.
It's only been three days. We got time. City manager? All right. Just wanted to mention, I've had a few residents ask, what's going on on Garden Ridge and Valley Ridge? And to the, the report there, Pollinator Prairies is what's going on. I had the opportunity next month, on the 2nd, to represent the city of Lewisville and do a presentation about how we've gotten here. So lots of cities are taking notice of what we're doing to help residents and to beautify our city, and I can't wait until we see, you know, the, the results of those medians coming in over the next couple of years. That'll be really exciting. So I also had the opportunity to bring home a bur oak in my convertible over the, the last week, where our friends Alila and everybody brought some, some more education learning. So if you have a convertible and need a tree, we know how to get you taken care of. And if you don't, we'll figure that out. So with that, we do have some closed session items. So in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551.072, Real Estate Property Acquisition, Section 551.087, Economic Development, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations, and Section 551.071, Consultation with Attorney, Legal Issues Regarded to Short-Term Rental Properties. We are going to take a break and go into closed session. Properties, we are going to take a break and go into closed session. All right. As there is no further action to be taken on tonight's agenda, we stand adjourned. It is 8:47 p.m.